All right, it looks like it is seven o'clock. Um, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
I make a motion to approve the flag. United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call attendance, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Present, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Present, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer. Councilmember McKnight.
Present, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Present, Courtney Johnson. All right, uh, welcome everyone and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members and we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate and give input can do so. This meeting is available live via the city's website by clicking on the video link under upcoming meetings on the homepage of C- at cityofcarver.com. Or you can join remotely via Zoom conferencing services and provide input. Information related to joining the Zoom conferencing services can be found on the city's website or attached to the agenda for this meeting. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council, wait to be recognized by the mayor, be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. Callers and those participating in the Zoom will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. All right, um, with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by councilmember Henry and a second by, uh, councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes. Uh, moving on to item number four, community comment. Um, so it looks like we do have some folks at the meeting, but I think you guys may all be here to talk about items that are on the agenda. If that's not the case and you want to talk about anything else, now would be the time and you're welcome to do so. Um, but wave your hand ferociously if you want to speak right now. All right. Everybody stay still, stay really, really still. Um, okay, um, with that, we'll move on. There are no presentations and reports, no public hearings. Um, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by councilmember Henry. Councilmember McKnight, did you want a second?
Second, sir.
All right, uh, motion by councilmember Henry, a second by councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Right, motion passes, uh, five to zero. All right, uh, moving on, other business. We have some new liquor license applications. Ms. Sanziden.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, first, an application this evening is from Neil Kettler and Jody Hess. They are the new owners of Carver Liquor. They have submitted an application for the off sale intoxicating liquor license for Carver Liquor, Inc. This type of license requires a background check and one has been completed with no reasons found to deny the license. Therefore, the next step in the process is for the city council to approve this license. After that, all required documentation is identified in the council packet. Will be sent to the state's alcohol and gambling enforcement division for their final approval. I would be happy to answer any questions and the applicants are also, uh, with us this evening if you have any questions for them.
Go ahead, Lori.
Hey, do you have some questions? Um, and, you know, welcome to Carver. I'm not familiar with your backgrounds, but, um, great to see us in downtown business. Keep going. Uh, this might be like something for Mr. Harris or Vicki, you might not even know the answer, but is this license transferable within city limits if they want to move the location of their business?
I'll, I'll take that. Um, liquor licenses in, in the city of Carver are granted for a specific premises. So it is not in and of itself transferable. They would, uh, they, they don't have a right to transfer the license to the location. That doesn't mean the council couldn't decide they would allow them to do it, but they can't do it on their own. I'd come back to you.
Larry, could you, I'm gonna ask if you could expand on that, Larry, just one piece. There's been, um, in the past, and I, I had the rumor mill has had where sometimes folks have been told or heard that liquor licenses, um, there is kind of an exclusionary factor where if you have it and if someone else wanted to open another liquor store, uh, closer to two twelve, that, you know, a certain party would have first right of refusal, et cetera. Can you explain to the council that there's no ownership in liquor licenses, et cetera, and is kind of the basis is, or basis for that?
And, 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 and that's a really good question, Brent, because that does come up a lot. The license is a privilege granted by the city or particular user for a particular period of time at a particular location. It, it affords them no rights other than that. Um, this is a gross generalization, but as a general rule for the city the size of Carver, there are no limitations on what you can issue for off sale liquor license. On sale is different. Um, so, no, this would not preclude if, and, and I want to be careful because I, I, I've not talked to Mr. Merrick about this. I'm not feeding the rumor mill. I'm not doing anything else, but if a strip center comes in on the United Parcel, the United Properties Parcel, and MGM wants to go in there and they come to you and, you know, they, they, there's no gross violation, MGM's gonna get an off sale liquor license. The fact that there are other off sale licenses, they're reporting no particular proprietary rights.
Any other questions, Lori?
No.
Right, if you could keep your camera on, that would be helpful, just as we're kind of discussing things and throughout the meeting. Um, any other questions or anyone with a motion to approve the liquor license for Carver Liquor? So I'll make a motion to approve a liquor license for off sale intoxicating liquor for Carver Liquor Incorporated from November sixteenth, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Kristi, did I hear you wanted to make the second? Okay, so we have a, a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by, uh, councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. Jody and Neil, welcome to Carver. We're excited to have you guys. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Um, rolling right along, the liquor license application for QuickTrip, Ms. Sanziden.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The second application we have this evening comes from QuickTrip, who has submitted an application for an off sale three-two liquor license for their new location at seventeen hundred Monroe Drive. Therefore, the next step in this process is for the city council's approval as well. Once that happens, the required documentation is identified in the council packet. Would be sent to the state's alcohol and gambling enforcement division again for their final approval. I would be happy to answer any questions and also Randy Biffles, who is the store manager at that location, is also in attendance tonight, and she is available for any additional questions.
Any questions or anyone with a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If this is, this is for just three point two percent alcohol by volume, correct?
Yes.
If they were, if they wanted to sell a strong beer or a, uh, spirits of some type, would they have to come before us for a different permit?
I'll take that, Vicki. The, the answer to that is yes, it would require a different license. It would require an intoxicating. If they want to sell strong beer, they need an intoxicating liquor license.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. That was it.
All right, Danielle, go ahead, Joy.
Um, I apologize. I didn't catch the name of the store manager who's here, but maybe they can answer. Um, for most QuickTrip locations, uh, do they typically apply for a three-two, um, license?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Lori, I think I saw you raise your hand.
Yep, I had one question. Um, is there a limit on the hours that the sale of a three point two, uh, for the liquor license off sale, um?
Yes, there's a limit on the hours as well.
Do you know what those are? Is anyone else, uh, in the meeting know what they, those are?
I believe they're the same as the bars. Though Sunday is limited, a little bit different. So you don't think you can buy until ten o'clock in the morning. Um, and I think it's till midnight, and the other days are, um, eight AM till two AM.
Does that concur with, uh, what we have for any, any other, uh, city ordinance or?
I can take that. Um, those hours are set by state statute.
Okay.
I can take those hours, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Brent.
Question is, can you?
Larry, could you, it's my understanding that convenience stores can't sell strong beer and alcohol, wine in Minnesota. Is that correct?
Hang on, sorry, Brent. I, I, I was, I had the mute, unmute, you are correct. Um, they would have to, it gets into, here's the best way to explain it. It's why grocery stores can't sell wine in Minnesota. It's why now when you go to Target's or Costco's and you see, even though it's technically part of the store, there's a separate entrance with the liquor department. So unless they have a dual entrance facility, you see this occasionally in a C store where they have literally as part of the building, it was a separate entrance, they have an intoxicated liquor store. But, and I, I don't want to speak for QuickTrip, but having been in a lot of QuickTrips in my life, I've never seen one set up that way. I mean, it would, it would be a significant structural alter, ca, al, alteration from what I see a regular store would be.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve a new liquor license for off sale three point two percent for QuickTrip for December fourteenth, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
A motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Right, motion passes, five to zero. Um, welcome, Randy, and welcome, Quick, QuickTrip. We are excited to have you guys. Have a good night. Uh, all right, eight point three, the purchasing policy amendments. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, last time the city council adopted revisions to the purchasing policy was in, uh, twenty seventeen. Uh, the policy is designed to outline processes for purchasing, set financial thresholds for approval, define conflict of interest standards to manage other miscellaneous aspects related to the city's purchasing. Uh, the proposed amendments primarily include a grant review, uh, section, which was recommended by Steve McDonald during one of our monthly finance meetings. Uh, it also gave us an opportunity to, uh, just update it based on state statute. The bidding requirement for projects increased, uh, from a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand a couple of years ago. Uh, the policy has been reviewed by the city attorney and Steve McDonald with Ebdol. Be happy to answer any questions if you may have. There's a redlined version of the document in your packet, uh, for all the changes that were made.
Any questions, council? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve amendments to the purchasing policy as presented. I'll second.
We need to give that one to Lori. So we have a motion by councilmember McKnight and a second by councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes unanimously. All right, um, circling back on the recreation services MOU. Um, I feel like we're kind of halfway wrapping up that discussion, but I want to make sure that we give enough room to, to wrap it up appropriately and make sure that we're in a good place before we move forward with that.
I just wanted to make my final comments then, um, that I hope we can encourage them through meeting with our parks commission, um, or with staff, however it turns out to have, uh, at least a handful of events that happen in Carver, and maybe a couple outside of what we have seen, or I should say along with what we have seen. Um, I talked about the yoga in the park one. It's an easy one for me to talk about. It was very well attended on a ninety-five degree day where I stood in my, um, window in my air conditioning, watched them have a great time. It was very hot and I wasn't going. Um, but things like that, I think were, it was really fun to see people, um, utilizing it here in our own city as well. And if we are going to be paying an increased dollar amount, um, of fifteen thousand a year towards that, um, I think, I think it's important that we do have some offerings here and that we keep up on that with them. So, at that, I'll say, Brent, thank, and I think you said Brenda Good helped you out, but thanks for, um, working on that contract because I know it was a lot higher to start with, but, um, all the rest of my comments, I won't reiterate. We heard them all in the, in the work session, so. Make sure that, that that's something we can, we can keep an eye on. That'd be great.
Um, so Brent, can you just kind of go over, because the way that I understand this, um, and just, I think so that we're clear and that we're all understanding this, I think that all of those columns, the facility reciprocity, the program reciprocity, and the staff time are actual charges, probably based on twenty nineteen numbers. So when you're saying, Kristy, the extra fifteen thousand dollars, they haven't jacked up the prices. That's the value that the city of Carver is subsidizing and by going into this agreement that that's what we're agreeing to do. Am I correct, Brent?
Yes, it, yes, the, the program and the facilities are based on usage. The, the sixteen hundred for staff time is representative of the time that they have to coordinate the open gyms, uh, the yoga in the park, et cetera. Um, there, the, kind of the decision point is the, the, the change in methodology where there'll be some years COVID related, except, you know, would be a great example where they're probably gonna be lower. Um, I don't think anyone really knows what, you know, recreation, um, is gonna look like going forward. Um, and I, I think that, uh, in, in my opinion at least, that this model prevents the city from being subject to a, a wild increase should it become extremely popular. That was a, a choice could, you know, uh, that we made kind of internally that we didn't want to go, we didn't want to true up, you know, every, every year or, you know, we could have a, you know, we could very well have a ten thousand dollar decrease one year and a twenty-five thousand dollar increase the next. So, felt like this would be a more, uh, stable year-to-year function, but I acknowledge there's other ways that it could be looked at.
Thank you.
Courtney, I was just gonna respond to, I do understand the methodology and why.
Okay.
When it's broken out and that they did that, but I also want to be cognizant of the fact that they're receiving a revenue stream from everyone who signs up outside of just this agreement also. So it's not that, you know, we're paying this and people are going free. They are receiving plenty of revenue outside of this agreement as well, so. I just have an expectation that we're going to be, if they're gonna be receiving that kind of revenue from us the way it is, and then we're going to be raising our prices, um, from what we, by a, a decent jump from the year before, that we're just cognizant of what we're getting back from them and that we work with them on that.
Yeah, no, I hear you. That's not anything new, however. They've always, you know, if I want to attend a yoga class, I've always still had to pay for that. The benefit is for the city of Carver residents is we kind of have, for all intents purposes, our own remote community center and are able to use that with the same benefits as anyone who has CHASCA on their driver's license. Um, so, I just, I want to just be careful that we're not weaving a narrative of, you know, that, that fifteen thousand dollars isn't just a jackup in price. That actually is representative of the usage of our residents.
Yeah, I understand the agreement. I've looked at it for many years, so, um, it just is, like I said, I've, I've already said, as long as we can work with them on what we have, our offerings are actually here in Carver, so.
Okay, thank you, Kristy. Um, does anyone else have anything else they want to add or questions about the recreation? So thumbs up from you, Glenn. Okay. Thumbs up from Joy. Lori? Thumbs up, okay. All right, um, I think we are good on that. Um, moving on to communications. Glenn, do you want to go first?
Certainly. We didn't have a planning commission meeting this month, um, but I would like to say that this weekend is the opening of the deer hunting season in Minnesota. And there will be people running around in orange, down in the river bottoms, below the flops, and all the way out on, on, uh, kind of, uh, fifth. So please, if you are going to participate in just hiking down in the state, uh, in the, uh, Fish and Wild Liberia, please wear something that somebody will be able to see other than brown and white. Thank you very much. Be careful and have yourselves a great one.
Thank you, Glenn. Uh, Joy?
Um, I, um, I know, uh, I think, um, Courtney talked about the, uh, annual mayor's luncheon that's coming up. I did reach out to Darren Noble because I thought there was going to be a virtual option to be able to participate to that. He did get back to me today and said that they're actually unfortunately gonna change it to all virtual. So, um, look, uh, so when, if you see the next Southwest Chamber communication, you see a link to register. Anybody can register. It's free. You'll get a Zoom link if you want to just watch and listen, um, which is something that I wanted to do, so I wanted to pass that along to the rest of the council and staff if you're interested. Um, uh, earlier this week, uh, we, the city received our signs for Green Step Cities. Those will be going up. I don't know if they're up yet. I don't get out much, Brent, or Chad, if they have been installed yet, but, um, they'll be going up on, I believe, on our population signs, so that's exciting. Um, and then, um, finally, everybody, please vote tomorrow. Polls open at the city hall at seven AM, polls at eight PM.
Thank you, Joy. Kristy?
Thanks, Joy. That leads right into my question. So when it comes to voting tomorrow or comes to voting tomorrow, how many people are going to be allowed in the, um, hall to vote at one time?
The way that we haven't managed the, because we have to allow for the social distancing, we will have about fourteen voting booths, and we have about four spots to chuck people in, and one place to pick up their ballot, and then one place, there's a few spots for them to wait in line to actually insert their ballot in the tabulator, so it'll be regulated by social distancing and how many people we can have in there at any given time.
Okay, because there's a rumor going around that you're only allowing four people in there at one time. Um, so.
Not sure where the rumor is coming from?
Right, but I want to make, that's not true?
No.
Okay, thank you, because I thought of that right away.
I think that was at the county government center for the early voting. I think that was it.
Well, I just heard it today. Someone asking about Carver City Hall.
Yeah, and I think somebody said, well, that's what they had at the, uh, Carver County Government Center. So, different setup, different building, different deal. Thank you, Vicki.
So fourteen polling voting booths?
Councilmember Mock, I, I did respond to a question similar to that earlier today on Facebook, and so that message is out there, um, for folks, so.
Good, 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 because that was that my next question is, hey, if we don't have that many people, what happens if we go past, it's eight o'clock, right?
In this one, these people are in line to vote, they can still vote. At eight o'clock, we basically mark the end of a line, so if a person is in line to vote, they are still allowed to vote. Unfortunately, if they come at eight-ten and they're not in line already, we cannot allow them to vote. That is.
Yeah. Perfect. Um, my other question is for Erin. We had talked about looking into seeing if we could still get grants for the historical kiosk in town. Have you looked into the state historical society if they were offering those or not?
Yeah, I, I emailed Michael Coop with the state office, and he said, not at this time, but he'll keep us in the loop if funding's available for them.
Okay, so they're not offering whatever that grant was at all? Okay.
But that's what it sounded like. I can dig in a little bit deeper. He just said it wasn't available right now.
Okay, well, and if you, and you mentioned it was for this specific project?
Yeah.
That's good enough then. Um, thanks.
All right, thanks, Kristy. Lori?
Um, just, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember McKnight, about the, uh, reminder on, um, the voting tomorrow, and just like to say in advance, thank you to the staff that's giving things set up. I know it's an extra workload, and especially thank you to our election judges.
Thank you, Lori. Um, let's see, just a few updates, um, for me, since our last meeting Brent and I met with Charlie and Patricia from Rent, Metro Cities. So it's always good, last year, they came out here, this year it was virtual, of course, uh, but it's always good to kind of connect with them um, and tell them about what's going on in Carver and then hearing about what Metro Cities is doing, um, and how we can work together and just be up to date and continue to have a good partnership with that group. Um, it's, we all know, there was a fire at Carver Crossing last Thursday. Um, and while, you know, it's not awesome, um, and some folks are probably still not sleeping in their own beds and in their units in Carver Crossing, um, it could have been so much worse. So, um, thanks to the Red Cross, Red Bench Bakery, Carver Elementary, that turned on a dime and let the folks who were displaced and had to leave their homes, um, at three o'clock on a, what was it, a Thursday afternoon, and gave them a warm place to hang out and play games with their kids and just feel comfortable. Um, and then the sheriff's department, and of course, uh, the Carver Fire Department, so, um, this is why we make all these investments and with all the budget stuff that we're doing so that we can be ready and prepared and well-trained. Um, and just really thankful and proud of all the folks who helped out with that. Um, let's see, we also had our first eight-inch snowfall of the year since we last met on October twentieth, and I think, um, although I've received a little bit of feedback from residents, um, we did, the city did a really good job, and I'm hoping, hearing overall really good feedback. So thank you, Chad, to, to your team for taking care of that as always, um, and then I will just, um, continue to reiterate everybody, uh, Joy and everybody else who's talked about voting tomorrow. Please, 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 if you haven't done it already, vote. From what we're hearing, um, you might want to bring a book because you might be in line for a little bit, uh, but the weather's supposed to be terrific, so there could be worse years that you've got to wait in line outside, so please, please, please come and vote. Um, with that, Mr. Merrick, do you have any updates?
Yeah, just have a couple of items I wanted to update the council on that were kind of remnants from the work session. Um, one being, I, I had mentioned to the council an update about just kind of looking at a new approach uh, for the Heritage Preservation Commission, and I've met with, uh, Erin Smith and Jessica Archer regarding that. Um, for, for many years, the HPC has kind of operated, uh, what I would, in my opinion, differently than the Parks Commission and, and Planning Commission. Um, and, and I don't feel like we're intentionally through any staff effort, I don't think we're giving them the, the same support, and I think as a result, we might be having some meeting process issues and just kind of consistency pieces, and so I, I asked Erin to just to kind of, speak to the council a little bit about some concepts and some broad strokes of, of what she and Jessica are considering, and then kind of, you know, have the council give some opportunity to comment because it, you know, the HPC has been operating, you know, in one way for a, a long time, and this isn't in, in any way saying that anybody on the HPC is doing anything wrong. It's, it's about a consistency and efficiency piece on, on how people, or what people can expect when they go through a city process, and we want that to be, uh, consistent, no matter what commission, uh, that someone's making an application to. So with that, Erin, could you speak to the council?
Sure, so there are a couple of things that we are going to start implementing over the next couple of meetings for the HPC. Uh, one of the biggest ones is we're going to provide staff information a little bit differently, so the Parks Commission, Planning Commission, City Council, a lot of our messaging looks pretty similar, where HPC doesn't have quite as much, um, like robust staff report information. So we are going to, uh, align HPC staff reports closer to what we do for council, planning commission, and parks. And then we also are digging in a little bit to the city ordinance that establishes the HPC and essentially how it works. We had a situation in the summer where someone did a project. We had a situation in the summer where someone did a project without getting approval from the HPC and we need to have a pretty solid process of what we do when that happens. Um, granted, if it's an emergency situation, obviously different, but we just want to be pretty clear on the steps that people need to take. Again, consistency is a big thing and messaging. So uh, beefed up staff reports, we are going to include the information from the guidelines in the staff report, so it's not flipping between a staff report and then the documents that we have or the design guidelines. And then we have not been great about letting people know that there's always an appeal process to the city council. It's not something that happens very often, but if someone proposes a project, they do have the opportunity to appeal the decision to city council within ten days of the HPC meeting. So we just want to have consistent branding, but then also messaging both before the meeting with a prepared staff report, then also after with how we deliver their message to say you're set to go. If something you want to appeal, let us know. We can bring it to the city council. So just trying to clean it up a little bit, bring it more consistent with the way we run other commissions to hopefully allow for greater consistency and hopefully some really successful projects downtown.
I'm gonna just comment on that Erin. I'm really happy um, to see this coming, um, coming up. As the liaison for the HPC, it does look very different from the rest of the commissions and the councils, so I think this is really helpful uh, for our commissioners and it's going to be very um, organized. It's gonna look really good and I think it's just gonna make the process easy and uh, more helpful to the people who are coming in also. So thanks for doing the work on it. Okay.
Then, uh, any other items on the HPC? I have one more item. I'm gonna share my screen here. I, I've mentioned this, but I just, it's not something that we typically uh, you know, do. Um, but I, I had mentioned previously to the council, everyone see this photo of gazebo park?
Yes.
Um, so this, the green area uh, that is mentioned, that is shown there is owned by the Carver, Carver Liquor. Now the, the folks that were on the call tonight own the business, but the property and building is owned by a, another individual. The area shaded in green, if you were to walk across the street at city hall, it would appear to be in the park. Uh, but it's actually uh, not. It's part of the Carver Liquor property, but the city has uh, landscaping in it. Um, and this kind of from a visual standpoint, it looks to be in the park that we've uh, talked to uh, the past two owners about buying that. We haven't been able to, to reach a, a price. Uh, we've been, uh, we use the uh, Carver County um, tax value for it. Uh, they, they have agreed to it. Uh, we are working on a process to acquire it and so Erin Smith is going to be bringing uh, the action to the planning commission just to confirm that it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, then eventually it'll make it way to the city council. The city attorney, Larry Harris and Dan Lannister are working on uh, agreements and legal descriptions for it, but I just wanted to kind of queue the council in on it. We don't uh, on a regular basis buy land. Um, it's a nominal amount. Um, but I just wanted to just describe it in advance of the process kind of coming down the line. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Nope.
And then uh, the last item just out of a, that I, I believe everyone uh, in the meeting knows this, but just for the sake of transparency for folks that are heading to the polls tomorrow, uh, there was a, unfortunately, there was an automobile accident uh, late Friday afternoon where um, someone inadvertently backed into the fence scene at city hall. Or ended it back in, but the vehicle rolled into the fence scene at, at city hall that caused damage to two fence panels, so. Um, just wanted to be transparent that we're aware of it. We've had the fence contractor out to give us an estimate of the repair. It'll, it'll probably take several weeks if not months to custom-made fence for our project, so it's not something they have on the shelf. Uh, we've reported it uh, to our insurance company who are, is in communication with the driver's insurance company. Deputy Sandberg uh, provided a report, so all the process is moving forward, but uh, for some folks, this will be their first visit to city hall uh, since our new building's been up and so I did want them to think, or those to think that somehow we've already wrecked our building in a short time that we didn't, so. Uh, with that, that's all the updates I have for tonight. Thank you Mayor and Council.
Thank you Brent. So I just have one more quick update that I forgot to mention. Um, last Tuesday night, I had a, what we called the meeting of the chairs with the chairs of the Parks Planning Commissions and HPC where we just kind of went through um, running a meeting, dealing with Zoom, Zoom shortcuts, how do you handle um, public comment and, and feedback? And really just kind of a, a time for them to ask questions, for us to bounce ideas off of each other um, as a group. So um, thanks to Erin for her help, kind of wrangling, herding the cats for that one. Appreciate it, so. Um, with that, if nobody else has anything else to add or any other updates, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Henry?
A second.
Uh, co, a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote please?
Councilmember Henry?
Hi Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock?
I, Christie Mock.
Councilmember Sayer?
I, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
I, Joy McKnight.
And Mayor Johnson?
I, Courtney Johnson. Alright, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you everybody. Have a good night.